Good morning and welcome to the commission meeting for May 14th. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance with Kirsten leading us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Kirsten. I'd like to remind everybody to silence their cellphones if they will and there's meeting documents next to Commissioner Kelly and Robert has a listening device if anyone would like to use those. Start with routine business.
Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any questions or additions, changes? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same motion passes four to zero with one absence.
Item number two is to approve the county commission minutes of May 7th, 2013.
Prove the minutes.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from last week. Any corrections? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes four to zero again with one absent.
Item number three are bills to be paid in the amount of $459,988.37.
Pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Anyone have any comments Commissioner?
Mr. Chair, again this week we have five people getting the $420 max on their electric bill after eight last week and I don't think I've ever seen more than two in a previous bill so this is apparently an issue. Thank you.
Thank you Mr. Barth. Any other comments? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve the bills. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously five to zero.
Item number four are reports. A is the Minnehaha County General Fund analysis as of March 31st, 2013. Item B is the Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Center report for April 2013. And item C is the Minnehaha County Auditor's account with the county treasurer as of April 30th, 2013. Those reports have been filed in the auditor's office.
Thank you.
Item five is personnel. A is a motion to approve the routine action.
Motion approved.
Second.
You have to walk fast Jen.
I know.
Does anyone have any questions for Jen this morning? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve routine action. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item B is consider a motion to move Chris Greasy, Bridge and Highway Supervisor for the Highway Department from grade 18-2 to grade 18-4, $23.28 per hour effective January 30th, 2013.
Good morning Commissioners, Jen Addix from Human Resources. As you know, department heads have the authorization to hire an employee between step one and step four on the pay grade. DJ Boothy, the Highway Superintendent, is requesting an adjustment for the Highway Bridge and Science Supervisor, Chris Greasy, from step two to step four backdating to January 2013 based on his qualifications. You've been given a briefing memo on this matter and DJ is here too if you have any questions for him.
Thank you. DJ, would you like to have any comments?
One minute if you guys have some questions.
Okay. We have a motion.
I would make a motion to approve it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request. Any other questions or concerns? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item six are application for abatement. Kyle Helseth.
Good morning Commissioners, Kyle Helseth, Equalization Office. We bring forward this morning five requests for abatements. All of these requests are for the veterans exemption that was granted at the Boards of Equalization. First one is record ID 15119, 2012, taxes payable in the amount of $970.88. The second is record ID 16268 for 2012 property taxes in the amount of $1,297.38. The third is record ID 17423 in the amount of $447.68. The fourth is record ID 78677, 2012 property taxes in the amount of $1,630.8. The last one is a assessment freeze.
That one.
Well, I think act on first four and the next one's pay ons. Sorry about that.
I have a question Mr. Chair. Kyle, on those veterans things, they don't have to apply every year, do they?
No sir, they don't. It's a one time.
Thank you.
Move approval on those four. Second. A motion and a second to approve items A through D. Any questions or comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Good morning Pam.
Good morning. Pam Yelson, the Treasurer's Office. I have one elderly freeze assessment. It's for ID number 24333. It's for $881.23.
Motion approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions for Pam? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item number seven, notices and requests. Authorize the county auditor to publish a notice to bidders for project MC 1490 BM-13, County Highway 149 Asphalt Profiling and Overlay. DJ Boothy.
Good morning Commissioners, DJ Boothy, Highway Superintendent. This is to advertise for a mill and overlay project for the four miles from Colton North to the county line and we're estimating I think between $800,000 and $900,000 for the contract price on this depending on the bid climate. So if you have any questions, I can answer them now.
Any questions for DJ? If you.
I'll make the motion to authorize.
Second.
We have a second. DJ, if I might, is this going to be a consortium again of purchasing or is this going to be done individually?
This will be one single contract, construction contract and the administration part of it will be done in-house.
Okay, very good. Any other comments or questions? We have a motion and a second to approve the, or publish the notice. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
There are no planning and zoning notices and there are no petition for compromise of lien. The next item is opportunity for public comment.
If anyone has any comments that they would like to make on any item that is not on the agenda, we appreciate or welcome that input now. If not, I don't see anyone moving, I will go to the regular business agenda.
Regular business. Item 10 is a public hearing to consider an application for retail on and off sale malt beverages and South Dakota farm wine from Sioux Falls Campgrounds Incorporated for the Yogi Bear Camp Resort at 26014 478th Avenue in Brandon, South Dakota. And Bruce is here today if anyone has any questions that they would like to ask him in regard to this license, otherwise the action today is either to approve or deny the license applications.
Good morning Bruce.
Morning.
Do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I think it's pretty straightforward, it's up to you.
Okay.
Yep.
Anyone have a question?
Do you have any questions for me?
You probably need to give us your name and address just to.
Bruce Aljets. My home address is 26004 478th Avenue, Brandon, South Dakota.
Thank you Bruce. No questions for Bruce? Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to.
This is a public hearing.
It's a public hearing. We have to get opponents and opponents.
Is anyone here in favor besides Bruce? Anyone opposed? Evidently not.
I'll make my motion to approve the, the application for malt beverage.
Second. A motion and a second to approve the retail on, off sale malt beverage application.
And South Dakota farm wine.
And South Dakota, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item 11 is consider a resolution to establish Minnehaha County Criminal Justice Advisory Committee and authorize the chairman to sign the charter for the Minnehaha County Criminal Justice Advisory Committee. Gerald Benega.
Good morning. We've been talking about a criminal justice advisory committee since the state approved a change if you will in their philosophical need to imprison individuals. We have got most of the details that we need but now we need to start the process to figure out how it affects frankly Minnehaha County, our facilities and looking for alternative ways for us to support the state's initiative and the governor's initiative. We've asked Craig Anderson to head this committee. Most of you may know Craig. He was going to be here this morning but had a little conflict with the latter and the latter won so he won't be here this morning. Craig's resume is incredible. I've had this for a while. It frankly is nine pages long so I'm not just going to highlight that but he has many degrees. He's got a law degree, he's got an MBA, he's got a master's in public accounting, he's a CPA. He's been the consulting engineer if you will of an analytic company. He's been the founder and the director and the board of directors of Prairie Wave. He's the president, was the past president of McLeod's. He's the past president of Dakota Telecommunications Group or DTG as we know it. He's been a vice president and chief financial officer and the general counsel and the corporate secretary for Osted's. He was the director and the vice president of Dialnet. He was the director and senior vice president and legal advisor to a company called the Zond Group and he also has a legal practice and he also consults if you will with the Catholic diocese. He's got an incredible resume. Some of us have got to know him really well. He's obviously someone who has a lot of interest in supporting public safety if you will and we're thrilled that he would dedicate his time and efforts to make that happen. We have a resolution that's been passed out to you. I don't know that we need to read it unless the commission decides that they would like to do that. Any input? Any questions? We have support if you will in the audience. Michelle, would you like to make any comments about the initiative or the whole process that we'll be starting in the next few weeks?
We too would like to thank him for his dedication to this project. There's a lot of unknowns with this so we want to make sure that we move forward in the best way possible and I think involving the community in our efforts is about the best way we can go. So we're just here to help support that and thank the commission as well for their support.
Thank you Michelle. Anyone else have any comments? Currently I am the liaison with the Sheriff's Department and Commissioner Kelly was also involved with it over the last couple of years so the two of us will be on the commission. Obviously Craig Anderson will be the chair of the advisory committee. Robert Wilson is going to be an ex-official staff person and help us with the support. We also have a small budget for some of the travel and expenses that we may incur and we will appoint additional members as we go. Craig has already talked about task force members that have asked to be part of the group and they will be appointed for special task and special responsibilities as we move forward. So we don't have a timeframe put together but we will do this as expeditiously as possible but still make sure that the public is made aware of what's going on on a regular basis. Other questions Commissioner?
I would just comment that I think this is the right thing to, you know, our facilities are reaching capacity as well as becoming more outdated at all times and we're faced with some other changes with the governor's criminal justice initiative which although I'm extremely hopeful about, I'm also have my little fears in the background. So having this type of committee looking at what we need in this county I think is a great idea.
Thank you. Any other comments Commissioner Kelly?
Well, you know, a lot of this evolves around the correction center but it's going to be broader than that but we have an opportunity now with our former warden going to the penitentiary and we've got a good relationship with the people up in the Department of Corrections and Peer. I think the state's on board with helping us so I think we can work together. Craig, I can't think of a better chairman. I was delighted when he agreed to do it.
Absolutely.
Other comments? If not, I think we need a motion to approve the resolution and the charter if you will and the appointment of Craig as the chairperson and I'd also like to include myself and Commissioner Kelly as members of the group.
Reiterate my motion and support.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
A motion and a second. Any comments or concerns, questions from the audience? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item number 12 is authorize chairman to sign jail inmate housing contract between Minnehaha County and Lincoln County. Jeff Gromer.
We're just requesting to renew the contract with Lincoln County. We currently contract with Lincoln County for 12 beds every day of the year. The only real change in the contract would be a slight increase in the daily rate from 7592 to 7869. Contract would be written to expire on June 30th which puts it in line with the rest of our contract.
We're going to have to have you identify yourself.
I'm sorry.
Give us your name, we know who you are.
Jeff Gromer, I'm the warden at the jail.
Thank you Jeff. Any questions for Jeff?
Just comment Jeff, I want to commend you on making the slight increase because I think too often we just approve these at the last year's rate and then all of a sudden we get caught and I think small adjustments along the way will keep it in line with what our costs actually are.
Well, and the increase matches the increase from the other 16 contracts that was filed last year. This date now puts the contract expiration date the same as the other counties so we'll have them all on the same cycle.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jeff?
Make a motion to authorize the chair to sign it.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the contract between Minnehaha County and Lincoln County. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item 13 is final consideration of Minnehaha County Petitioner Gatherers Policy Committee Report and Recommendations. Aaron Serska.
Good morning, Aaron Serska acting as chair of the Petition Gatherers Committee. And just to remind everyone of last week, we had great turnout at our meeting. All of the committee members and members of the public were there. Everyone agreed how important petition gathering is to our community and in our governmental process and the recommendation is to keep the policy as is. The discussion pretty much revolved around the item of the policy where petitioners were to stand in inclement weather and there are a few options that the committee came to, to offer to the commission. It's recommended to keep it as is with allowing one individual to stand in the breezeway during inclement weather with petitioners rotating which one gets to stand in the breezeway at different times. This has worked in the past and the committee members present and the community members present agreed that that was a viable option. The other options include an inclement weather to allow petitioners to stand right inside the doorway. We also had an option of building a shelter right outside of the building similar to that of a bus stop or construct a new, more open entrance. Some of the disadvantages of the building is the cost however by building you offer less congestion in that doorway. So those are our options and we look forward to the commission's consideration of our recommendations.
Thank you Aaron and thank you for serving on that committee along with Commissioner Barth and Commissioner Heiburger so we appreciate your input. Anyone have any questions for Commissioner Kelly?
Aaron, this committee's recommendation will not allow them inside the administration building, or is that correct?
The only recommendation that does is option two and that's instead of having the one petitioner stand in that breezeway in the doorway is to have them stand directly just inside the doorway.
Which is the current policy.
The current policy is to have them stand right inside the doorway, one at a time.
Just for clarification Commissioner, the current policy as it stands right now is that folks need to be outside of the building however in inclement weather and that we can allow a person, just one person to stand in that breezeway and that that's how it stands right now in that entryway. The option two that Aaron was referring to, that instead of the breezeway you could potentially allow them to step right inside the administration building typically by the directory right across, you know, where the bathrooms are. I mean inside, physically inside the building. And I believe the committee recommendation was really to keep the policy as it is right now. That was their number one.
Which would be option one.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Just a comment.
Sure.
The meeting went very well, it wasn't very long. We all had an opportunity to express our opinions and we had some outside people too, not just, not just the commission and Aaron, there was other people on the committee. Now I forgot what I was going to mention. I'll have to think about it.
Commissioner?
Oh, I do know where I was. Sorry, I had to get back to it. With the moving of the driver's license people down on Kewanas and Russell, I feel like the congestion is going to be less because we'll have a lot of people that used to be here on a daily basis not here anymore and so the congestion issue I think will decrease and the only time we're looking at that is if we're gathering petitions in the winter which isn't real frequent.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Barth?
Well, I would just call our attention to the options which include constructing a shelter similar to a bus stop on the exterior there and making a new and more open entrance. The fact is that this is the busiest entrance to our building. The east entrance is gloriously constructed to allow massive numbers to come in but the parking lot is on the other side of the building so everybody comes in that small door and the door may be legally wide enough for handicap access but it's not very easy and if anyone has pushed people through doors on a wheelchair, you know, you're putting, the door is trying to close, the bar in the middle between the doors. I would like a wider entrance there, one way or the other. I recognize that there are some costs but I'm not unwilling to at least examine those costs and if we had a glassed in area on the outside like a bus stop type thing, there would be shelter from wind and from rain and I don't think it would hurt the appearance of the building. Anyway, this is an option, perhaps we can talk about it at a future time maybe in the building committee but I think that right now it's not very easy to get through with handicap people.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other questions for Aaron? No? We certainly like input or comments from the audience if they wish, otherwise we will... No one moving? Good morning.
Good morning, Teresa Staley Sioux Falls. And I agree with Commissioner Barth that that, having been down here with the snowgate petition drive, that that doorway needs to be widened. And actually after we had that last task force meeting, several of us went down and looked at the areas, there's restrooms on the side and it would be neat if they could come in and widen that whole foyer out so that there is more passageway allowed. But at the end of the day, you know, we've had a resurgence of petitioning here. We just had a referendum happen. These people got signatures, worked so hard and they got over 6,000 signatures in less than, I think it was, two weeks. That is fabulous. I can tell you, having been out there, that is, that shows you that people are willing to get in and participate. And those people from the Shapes Sioux Falls thing told me, "We will never look at a petitioner the same way." I would challenge each one of you to get out there sometime and hold a petition. You will see it from this side of the fence at that time. It's a fabulous thing for our community. Spellerburg, Snowgates, now we're going to have Shapes Sioux Falls on the ballot. This is activism at its best. So common sense needs to prevail here. I would like to see this group of people doing things to encourage that instead of spitting in our face at times and saying, you know, "This is a hassle because people are asking us to sign a petition." No, this is fabulous, we need to encourage it. So I'm hoping that we'll just make this a warm embrace to the public. Thank you.
Other comments?
I'm Bruce Danielson. I was here for the meeting with Jeff Barth and Cindy and the, I really want to stress the ADA aspect of it, having a disabled family member and having watched the disabled people going through that entrance. And the entrance needs to be, get rid of that center mailbox unit. People are standing there also while all these people in their wheelchairs or their walkers are going in and out. I just watched somebody come in the door here a few minutes ago when I was coming in and it's difficult. And it's not smooth anymore. A lot of these modern wheelchairs have small wheels on them that can't get over the hump very easily. They're motorized or they get pushed. So there's a lot of aspects of those 50-year-old doors that need to go. And the easiest way, having watched people actually waiting for their bus ride to come and everything else, are standing there by the door waiting for somebody to come and they're blocking the entrance. So it isn't just the petitioners or the, it's people who are waiting for their rides, it's people that are, that are disabled. They're all standing there or riding in their wheelchairs waiting to get through. So having had to deal a lot with ADA, I see that that is probably your biggest legal hurdle for that entrance. And it's not allowing people, "Oh, if you're disabled, go to this door or that door." They have to go to the door that everybody else goes to. There isn't a segregation aspect here. It's ADA is equality. And having done the snowgates and been involved in petition drives, I can go from that one, Teresa covered it very well, but I just want to stress the ADA aspect of it. Thank you.
Thank you Bruce. Any other comments?
Well, I was on board for a little while. I don't know what mailbox he's talking about but if he's talking about my drop box for property taxes, that'd be a big problem.
Oh, can I answer that? I would like to see that included in a new entrance aspect. I mean, that's not a problem. I totally agree because I use that mailbox.
And thousands of people do. If you're thinking about getting rid of it, then I'm not on board.
Bruce, just a second, we have to have one at a time at the microphone so I'm sorry. We'll wait a second.
So my concern was if the mailbox he's talking about is my drop box, that people drop off their property taxes and stuff, then I have a problem with that because thousands and thousands of people use it and that would be an issue.
Thank you Pam. Questions? Commissioner Heiburger?
Just a comment. I believe that we are compliant with ADA standards and I realize it can be some issues and I appreciate your comments and stuff. We have a 50-year-old building that, you know, that can be looked at in the future but we are compliant with ADA standards.
It's, it meets minimum standards. I agree with that. It's a 36-inch door and, and the other parts that go with it and I agree with that. And I'm, and I'm sorry Pam for interrupting you but I forgot about, I wanted to mention, you know, the importance of that box. And with just a slightly enlarged entry, you know, outside the building, if that, if the cost could be looked into to have a, something out there that, that allows people to have that gathering area that's right now being used at the bottom of the steps or in the foyer, you know, that's what I was asking about.
Thank you. Morning Ken.
Commissioners, I'd just like to reiterate in that I think the issue at hand is, does our current petition policy as it stands right now, does that accommodate both the wishes of the petition gatherers and their need for access to the public and our need to, you know, to have unfettered access as well into the building? And, and whole, I think it does. I think our current policy accomplishes those goals and I would not recommend any change to that policy and I would recommend that you reiterate that that is the current policy as will be followed. The issues of expanding the doorways and that, and some of these other structural issues, I think those are absolutely worthy of discussion and exploration but I don't think those issues right now should cloud, does our current policy meet the needs of both the petition gatherers and our need to have unfettered access into the building? And that so, we can certainly look at those things and incorporate and look at costs and see what it would do for future entries to the building as part of your capital improvement schedule and I would, I would urge you to consider, you know, to stick with the policy right now. And that, and... And that, and...
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I agree with Ken that, you know, we, what, I, I'm not happy with number one, but it's better than any of the other options. But I do think we have an obligation to, to look at that entrance. It's not a convenient entrance by any stretch. And, uh, I think today, people are expecting the automatic doors anyway, and, and I, I think we should seriously look at it before budget time and see how we could fit that into 2014 or 15.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Heiburger?
Just done it.
I'm sorry.
I'm pretty sure we have an automatic door there for accessible entrance.
We do.
I'm just ready to make a motion.
Any other comments? Otherwise, we'll go with a motion. Commissioner Heiburger?
I'd like to make the, leave, leave the policy as stands.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Any other questions? Commissioner Barth?
I just would, uh, you know, also accept the work of the committee, uh, being a member of it. I suppose that's heading myself a little bit, but we have a number of folks here that came and I appreciate their attendance.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Pecus?
Yeah, and I just wanna reiterate that the Minnehaw County Commission does recognize the fact that there's a constitutional right to petition and that we are going to acknowledge that right. And if anything, this entrance situation that was right before the commission is incidental to, unfortunately, the process of gathering petition signatures.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve, which is option one, to leave it as is. Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Kelly?
Aye.
Pecus?
Aye.
Benega?
Yes, motion unanimously passes, five to zero. Thank you.
Item number 14 is consider a motion to reappoint Kim Ringer to the Sulan Library Board of Directors. Daryl Benega.
Uh, Kim has been a very active, uh, member of the Sulan Libraries Board of Directors. She has fulfilled her first term and she would like to serve again a second term, and I would recommend that she be reappointed for her last term.
I'd make that motion to reappoint.
Second?
A motion or, and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Before we go to item 15, I wanted to thank Erin for your leadership in putting that committee together. We appreciate your extra efforts. Thank you. Item 15.
Item 15 is consider a resolutions to compromise various categories of county aid liens in accordance with county policy. Bob Litz.
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office, and, uh, this is our annual lien cleanup policy. The current policy is to cancel the following categories of county aid liens annually. Liens of more than $30,000, reduced to 30,000. I think that was a courtesy of Commissioner Barth here a couple of years ago. Liens on deceased persons with, reduced to zero. And what we do is we wait one year unless we have verified the estate has no assets, and that list has been reviewed by Human Services. Third part would be liens with no activity for 30 years, reduced to zero. Fourth is liens under $250 with no activity for 10 years, reduced to zero. And the fifth is liens identified as uncollectible, be they deceased, transient, social security income, homeless, or no resources, they'd be reduced to zero too. This list has been compiled by Human Services. I request that you approve the attached resolutions, which will cancel the liens that have been identified in these categories. If you wish to see the details, lists of the liens to be canceled, please let me know and I'll bring them. Uh, the attached chart shows the history of our annual lien cleanups and the increasing balance of liens owed to the county. I'm requesting that you would, uh, you would sign the resolutions today.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions of Mr. Litz? Commissioner Heiburger?
Just a comment. This will clean up 266 liens for a total of $364,492.61.
I don't believe that's the right number. It's a huge number.
Is that right? Okay. I'm looking at the wrong thing then. 722,551.17.
Thank you. No, that's not a problem. I think the thing that is amazing to me is even with the cleanup of these liens, we still have, what, 20, almost 27 million dollars? Pardon? 57 million.
57 million.
Of liens still outstanding in the, uh, budget process, which, who knows if we'll collect any of it? It's a significant number that count, the county's responsible for that never receives any revenue for the services provided, so...
Well, and I'd also like to add that since 1991, we've, uh, we've forgiven over 21.7 million dollars.
We have a need for a motion. Commissioner Barth?
I'll make a motion to do that, but I have a question for the auditor.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a, a motion and a second. Commissioner Barth?
Auditor Bob, is there anything we can do additionally to try to collect some of these monies?
Do you know if there was? I, I'm not aware of what it is, and, uh, you know, I looked this situation over when we first got here. We were, we talked a lot with Deb down there, and, uh, according to state law, we'd have to change some state laws to go after folks, and I, I don't have a good answer for you, Commissioner.
Call some guys from New York to come and help.
It didn't work.
Well, if I may...
Sure. Commissioner Pecus?
You know, uh, government, unfortunately, you hear the, uh, genre that government needs to be run more effectively like a business. There is not a business that would be successfully in operation that could sustain the kind of deficit and the debt that we carry. And that's by state law. We're required to provide these bare minimum services for what was affectionately called the poorest of the poor. And that's our responsibility. A business would not choose to do that. And that's why government, unfortunately, takes the trappings of a business unit, but is not run like a business unit. Uh, we would not make these investments if we did not have to by law. So, you know, I always hear about the fact that we run these amounts and we have this debt, but, uh, the reality is that, uh, you know, you're here on our, our city side of the house that, uh, you know, we have to have, you know, a strong business model. And unfortunately, we wouldn't succeed if this was a business model because of state law. And so, uh, that's why, uh, I think government needs to be run as government and not as, uh, necessarily the cold, hard, uh, business model that many people champion. Uh, it just doesn't work that way. And if you wanna change it, get elected, go to peer, change the statutes, just as Auditor Bob indicated.
Mr. Kelly?
Bob, do we have any idea of what percentage of the, of the 57 million are public defense costs?
Uh, I couldn't stand up here and tell you that today, but if you'd like me to research that, we'd certainly be willing to do that.
Would it take a great deal of research to find out?
I don't know the answer to that either. Maybe Mr. Pecus has an idea.
I, I do believe it was running about 17 million, I think, and that is a pittance compared to the hospital liens that we have. You know, I would say it's about 25% of what we have compared to hospital liens that we have. So, it's not, it's not criminal defense costs. It's our two major hospital systems that are dealing with providing health, uh, services for individuals that do not have health insurance.
Any comment? Other comments or questions? Commissioners?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes, I'd like to follow up on Commissioner Pecus's comments about the, the nature of government and, uh, you know, the nature of government is to provide services, of course. And if we ran it on a business model, that would also mean we have profit, meaning it would cost more. And I just don't think those who advocate for that type of position really have thought that through.
Right. Any other comments?
We did make a motion, so...
We do have a motion and a second.
Did for all three or four?
Uh, we can have one motion, as I've been told, for all of items A, B, C, D, and E.
That was my, uh, my motion.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? If not, those in favor of approving, uh, item 15 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Item number 16 is a briefing from Minnehaw County Auditor on Establishment of a Capital Accumulation Fund. Bob Litz?
Still Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. Uh, I'm bringing this forward here again. We talked about it a few years ago here, the idea of accumulating some funds for restricted purposes, and, uh, but we didn't have any money to accumulate at that time. And, uh, I would tell you today that the, uh, the county position is a little bit better than the last time I brought this up. But, uh, you know, there's, uh, it's been previously discussed by the commission, the idea that the county accumulate funds for capital purposes. And there have been some departments discussing future infrastructure needs and the methods to obtain funding to do so. The idea that we do not have a methodical process for keeping up with the depreciation of our capital investments is also a concern. Uh, just to demonstrate how much depreciation we experience in a year, I've assembled the following. And, uh, the total of the 2012 depreciation was 4.7 million. And, uh, out of that there, I've got listed buildings, land improvements, equipment, general fund, equipment, highway fund, equipment, other funds, and infrastructure, highway. And I chose to leave the bottom three off in compiling my numbers, uh, simply because those are different revenue sources. And, and I also wanna say that these numbers are kinda some raw numbers. And we can go through this budget and say, "Well, you know, so-and-so got a new chair. Doesn't that count?" Uh, you know, the IT department, highway, there's, there's all sorts of things to parse on this, but I, I just wanna put forth the bigger numbers here today. Uh, the first three items are what the building fund helps ameliorate the depreciation of those, those items total, 2.2 million. And those are the focus of my discussion today. The other depreciation items have various means of slowing or limiting depreciation outside the general fund or within department budgets. Below shows the actual amounts of expenditures for 2012. The total of the building fund in 2012 is 3.8. Total bond redemption, uh, with the cash we spent and, uh, the, the cost of the services for the banking industry and those who are, uh, in that game was 3.6, leaving the capital improvements we spent at 191,528.21, which typically, if you go back, is, is a lower amount. We've spent more. We've certainly spent more. And, uh, I would encourage that if that, that amounts are there. Uh, the total depreciation of 2.2, 2.2 million, 272,159. Uh, if you subtract the building fund expenditures of 191,000, we come up with, uh, a little over $2 million with a gap in the investment. And, uh, there is a way to help offset the gap in, uh, this investment versus depreciation. It's called a capital accumulation fund balance, as it's outlined in South Dakota Code, uh, 7-21-51. The statute outlines the general concepts and conditions of the account. Uh, some of the considerations that are brought forward would, uh, the first one would be a resolution would be required to establish an assigned fund balance. Second thing, uh, main thing would be requirements for additions to the account would need to be established. And then, uh, third one would be conditions under which the expenditures could be made and would, and then you'd need to outline that and decide on what you want to spend the money for. And some of that's outlined in the, uh, in the, uh, statute that I provided. And for this discussion, I have included the statute that outlines the availability for capital outlay accumulations. Uh, second, the 2012 budget balances. Uh, third, the 2012 budgeted reserve, uh, revenues versus actual revenues. And, uh, the 2012 assigned, or unassigned and undesigned fund balances that would actually be available for this type of thing. Uh, and when considering these, uh, these amounts, especially the unassigned, undesigned fund balances, after the commission decides to support this notion, we'll need to put together a resolution. And I would also remind you that, uh, you know, we were trying to build up our cash in these last couple of years, and it looks like we're kinda getting over that place where Mr. McFarland will no longer have a heart attack when we talk about budgets. So, I'm, uh, I'm open to, uh, any, any questions here or any ideas for this here. You know, I would also say this, that, that, that basically what we're, we're kinda looking at here with these big numbers is, is a, is a philosophical shift that I, I brought to the Auditor's Office. Now, there are those who believe that, uh, when you are collecting tax dollars, you spend all them down as close as you can get every year. And I understand that, but I also think that, uh, we've had a shift in, uh, philosophy here, and, and I'd like to bring forward the notion that it is good stewardship of the public's money to set aside some money. And, uh, it, it would also probably improve our bond rating as we went forward if we had a little bit of, uh, a backup fund here. But, you know, how much and what to do with that money is, is entirely up to this commission if you support this notion.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, Bob, we're effectively saying we're gonna fund depreciation. Is that kinda where it's coming from?
I'd like to point out in 7-21-51, uh, there's a phrase in there that Kirsten probably would like, and it says includes any purpose which is extraordinary in nature. And that is a safety valve that would allow you, if you're low on cash at that point, you can do a lot of things with it. It's up to you as a commission, but you're gonna have to talk about it before you do it. And you'd also need 60% of the governing body to agree on that, on whatever you're going for. Yeah, and...
Well, if, if we did that, wouldn't we then, we'd pay the bond redemption out of that fund, effectively?
You certainly, you certainly could. Or you could put it into the, the, the building fund that does repairs and, and upgrades around the, the...
And that does the bond redemption.
Yes.
And this would be major things. It would not be chairs and, uh...
No.
...cables. It would be highways, and it would be buildings, and it would be...
Well, I'd, I'd like to stay out of the highway fund and stay in the general fund for...
Well, you have the same issue over in the highway. You just have the different budget to work with.
Yes, yes, exactly. Yes, exactly.
But I, I agree that, that if you do that, build up that fund, you don't get stuck with big tax increases down the road when you have major projects come on and...
I, I just feel that it'd be prudent for us to do so, but I'd like to point out that, you know, it would take, uh, the years the commission would decide how much money you put in there every year. And at the end of 84 months, which is five years, then you're gonna have to look at that total amount. If you've not spent it at that point, it will take a resolution every year to keep that going.
Commissioner Pecus?
Thank you. And I guess, uh, in my time I've been on the commission, we have been adjusting from what I'll say affectionately back in the 90s was the county funding source fire sale, which, uh, the, um, legislature gave away effective funding sources for the county. It's amazing. We've had many different city councilors, uh, come and serve on the commission, and they're always dismayed at the financial structure that we have at the county because, quite frankly, we're paupers. We get a dollar, we spend a dollar. And there has been literally, uh, 20 years of that taking place here at the county. And if there is some big funding issue that has to take place, the only option we have is to run for an opt-out because we operate on, we get a dollar, we spend a dollar. We're paupers. And, uh, ultimately, this does bring us up to having the financial acumen to try to save a little money so we can get out of what happened back in the 90s. And, uh, I don't wanna go into a history lesson because as Commissioner Benega always says, "History is history." But, uh, there is a reason why we've had this system set up the way it was, and this does take some small steps forward to try to correct that. So, I'm gonna support it.
Any other comments? Commissioner Barth?
Well, I, I would just say that, uh, you know, anytime we collect more taxes than we need, uh, the public has an objection to it. And, uh, the idea that, uh, our philosophy has been to, uh, spend every cent, it's, it's really not to spend every cent is our philosophy.
Right.
And, uh, getting those cents has been tough, as Commissioner Pecus pointed out. Uh, the idea of having, uh, some kind of a reserve towards our, uh, many projects going in the future, uh, it'd be nice, but I, I have a feeling that, uh, you know, this county is probably gaining 5,000 new citizens a year when you count the city and, and the rural when you count the city and the rural areas. These things cost money. And, you know, by the end of this century, we could be 800,000 people in Minnehaha County. What are we going to do? We've got to prepare for the future, and it doesn't mean we set aside a reserve. It means we go full blast towards the future. And it would be nice to have a reserve.
Commissioner Kelly?
There's two issues. One, you've got funding depreciation, which pays for your capital outlay and your replacement cost. The second one is, I'll call it a rainy day fund, which is, I believe, separate from this, because that is a fund that you need to have. So, if we go through another 209 to 211 issue, we can maintain the services we have with a reserve by dipping into that reserve in critical times. This allows us stability in taxes, I think, that over the years, when we have to replace that building. Or, and, you know, this building is a good example. I mean, if they had funded depreciation on this building 40 years ago, whatever it was built 50 years ago, you know, there'd be money there. I understand there's some stipulations on the state. But the fact remains, if you ever go to do a building like this, or we, you know, what we faced in the court or the jail, that's a big chunk of change, and the less you have to borrow, the better it is, and you just keep your taxes level. It does mean initially that there is what appears to be a slush fund, or, you know, that's an old political debate. Is do you spend reserves down, or do you hold those reserves for when you run into tough times? And, you know, I think it's important, we have a fiduciary responsibility, not for just the taxes this year, but for the taxes in 10 years too. And this would be a good way to approach it.
Any other comments before I make a couple? I think you're philosophically talking about two different issues. Frankly, you cannot use some of these funds, and just call them cash reserves for general operating costs. There isn't such a thing as a cash reserve for the operating of the budget. In fact, I think that's legally unpermitted, if you will. The other issue is, is you can't use this for making bond payments, as I understand it. And I'm pretty sure I'm right, because I've talked to the auditor about that. So, I think you need to get back to the whole philosophical need that we have as funding on a capital accumulation fund, which is earmarked only for capital projects or significant investments, if you will. So, that money's going to be used for capital investments or replacements. The general fund does not have a reserve, won't have a reserve, and you can't use this for a reserve. So, that is, I think legally, the way you need to look at this. I also think that, from my perspective, when we started to talk about this, we also had a philosophical conversation about unapplied cash and the 5% allowance issue of our requirement to set up a bad debts reserve, if you will, for people who didn't pay their taxes. Unfortunately, I think in some cases, we assume that we were going to get too much unapplied cash used for general operating accounts. That led us into a big problem with cash flow. When we changed that philosophy where the, I'll call it the unapplied cash, which is really cash reserves, and the 5% allowance were similar, we frankly were able to accumulate a little more cash, because at one point last year, we didn't have enough cash to pay the monthly operating costs. And that's also the reason why we refunded one of the bonds, whatever it was, over a year ago. So, there's a big difference between those two reserve conversations, the general fund issue, and the whole issue of unapplied cash versus, I'll call it, the bad debts accumulation. All of that, to me, needs to be part of the whole conversation about the budget, when we get to budget time. I agree with most of the comments that were said just a few minutes ago. But I will remind everybody that part, not part of, a big problem that we have in funding county government is public safety and the associated cost with that grow at somewhere between 12 and 15% a year for the county. And we have a limit of 1% to 2% in property tax revenue that doesn't come anywhere close to funding that cost of us doing business. So, there's a philosophical problem with the fact that we're limited on resources, but we're not limited on our responsibilities to pay for public safety. That's the philosophical problem that we have with funding government. And this will help with some capital investments, if you will, but it will not help us with any of the general fund issues that we currently are faced with. If I'm wrong, I hope Ken or somebody, Darlene, will stand up and tell me I am. But, okay, thank you. That's one time in 2013 I've been right.
Mark it down.
Mark it down, yeah. But I really feel very strongly that this has to be part of the total process. This is not a one-time philosophical change. This is something that is going to help us with capital issues, not general fund issues or making bond payments. I think, again, that's legally impossible. So, thank you for making the presentation. It gives us the seed, if you will, to start the conversation to eventually have a resolution that will show how we could use this. But it does need to be, quote, earmarked for specific needs, correct?
Yeah. May I?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'd love to have your comments.
Just the two points that I'd like to make, just quickly looking at the statute. And I know Bob commented that phrase from the statute I'd pay particular attention to, any purpose which is extraordinary in nature. I'm a little concerned that from the wording of the statute, that that purpose need be set out in the initial resolution. And so, to access those funds, just to be clear, that would be for that purpose from the get-go that was established. The second thing is the 84-month time period that's outlaid in the statute. I just want everyone to be clear and correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe that all funds that are accumulated from day one, from dollar one, must all be cleared out within 84 months. Is that correct?
It was explained to us by the Auditors from the state that at that fifth year, if we wanted to roll it over and keep that cash in there, up to $5 million, that we would have to do it by resolution that year for that year and every year subsequently.
So, their explanation to you was that it could be rolled further along, past 84 months?
Yes, but you're limited to the cap on there of $5 million, is my understanding. Gerald, was that your recollection of our conversation? Because it certainly was mine.
I think we're going to have to clarification on that, because I know where Kirsten's coming from right now. There's a difference between what you accumulate in years one through five versus, frankly, what you're going to use it for in year seven. So, I think from what, we're talking about two different things. You may, in fact, take that first year's pledge, if you will, and you can carry that forward for five years. But I don't believe that you can go through and carry it any longer than seven months for that first year's.
Eight, seven years.
First year's investment. It's kind of a roll-forward kind of thing. So, there's a difference between accumulation of those assets and frankly, the revenue that's set aside on an annual basis up to a certain period of time.
And the reason I mention that is just so everyone's clear, that is a bucket that I believe is dedicated for a specific purpose and must be spent within a particular period of time if you do elect to do that, just so everyone's aware of that.
For us to get to $5 million quickly will be darn near impossible anyway, so.
Question then, to fund buildings, you really, you can't do that under the current statutes. I mean, you're talking 20- or 40-year reserves. But things like carpet, cars, anything that's replaced within five years or has a usable life of five years. And I think we addressed this a little bit on the carpet in the last budget here, did we not? We can have, if we fund that depreciation, we have that money available. So, when you have to do $25,000 with a carpet, then the money's there. It does not have to be dragged out of a current budget so much as it's available. Am I hearing that correct?
I just caution, if I may, Chairman.
Yep.
That it needs to be a purpose that's extraordinary in nature, and there's no real case law interpreting that term. I'd be worried if something routine, maintenance, and upkeep would not be designated to fall within that area.
Well, what I'm thinking of, the generator and the backup generator, they're gone. They didn't work. That happened to us a couple of years ago. So, that, to me, would be an extraordinary situation, when we have a campus, including the courthouse, and the jail, which is unfortunately starving of power. So, I think, would that suffice for an extraordinary expenditure?
I think that's certainly more arguable than carpet.
Again, I think this is a preliminary conversation. I think that we need to have more black and white identification of the Auditor's opinion and the legal opinions that we can use, just to make sure that we have everything covered. We also have purchasing policies that talk about the amount that we can spend that's operational cost versus a capital cost. So, all of that needs to be included in the conversation, because when you get to extraordinary purchases, we need to define that a little better. Commissioner Kelly?
Well, we have a kind of a lull here for a period of about five or six weeks, and then we get into budget. I would hope that we could have this conversation just prior to the budget. So, I mean, I think every year we talk a little bit about it and you kind of kick it down to next year. Because once we get into the budget, it's a little hard. If you have the facts on this thing, the legal and the auditor facts and what state law allows, we can address that or begin to address it this budget year. Instead of delaying it a little bit more, I think it would be important to be able to start on this thing, at least this year.
Well, it is. But I will tell you that the reason it got kicked down the road forever is because you didn't have any cash to kick.
That's right.
Paupers?
Yep.
You could kick this forever, because it was never going to come up. Now, it has come up, and we have the ability to set some policies to address it, so.
And that's the right time to start.
Absolutely. Commissioner Hyberger?
I was actually going to say the opposite. I think it needs to be right after we approve the budget. And I think there's kind of a lull at that point, too, that we can look at something like this. At least if we're aware of the situation, we can move forward.
Mr. Chair?
I also see issues with it, because I don't see us having anything extra when we get done with our budget. You know, the best time to plant a tree is 20 years ago. The best time to spend saving $5 million was five years ago. But we couldn't do it. We couldn't do it five years ago.
The cycle bestens.
And right now, we've got enough building projects. I mean, if we save $5 million for the JDC and save $5 million for the highway department, save $5 million for the jail, and a couple of million dollars for the collection facility, that would be great. But we didn't, and we don't have it. So, if, let's say we decide to, you know, build two more floors on our jail next year. It'd be nice to have $5 million saved up, but we're not going to save $5 million by this time next year. So, I think, let's plan on a reserve and forget about funding it.
I disagree completely. I think we would all have a problem with that, Jeff. The deal is, is at this point, it is just a conversation, and it's been good conversation. But there has to be more extensive information provided so that we can come up with a policy that is workable and makes enough sense for us to be somewhat flexible, but still meet the guidelines that the auditor and the attorney are going to give us, so. And at this point, whether we do it before or after the budget, probably isn't as big a deal as the fact that we have the conversation and get the process rolling, so. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, may I make a suggestion?
Yes.
The state auditors are planning on being out of here Friday. And I was wondering if it would be a good idea if perhaps the Chair, our legal counsel, and somebody from the Auditor's Office just had a powwow and kind of got some of these ideas. Everybody on the same track is, we all see the color green a little bit differently. And I think that maybe we're all on the same track, but we need some clarification. I would think that'd be a good idea.
Well, we can have the conversation, but I will tell you from my experience, the conversation's good, but I want something in writing. And I don't know that we'll get that by Friday. We can get the legislative response quickly, because it's in law, so to speak, and an opinion. But the auditor's probably going to want to take some time to look at it also, I'm guessing.
Then I would gather from this here is I would simply wait and confer with perhaps you, the Chair, as to the next appropriate time to bring the subject forward.
I think we can ask the auditor right now for a written opinion in the next few weeks before we start the budget process.
That would come out of peer, though, not out of the people in that room.
He would probably have an opinion, but I'm guessing he's going to ask his supervisors before that goes into writing.
Right.
Correct. Thank you for your getting this process started, and we'll look forward to continuing the conversation at budget time.
Thanks for your time, Commissioners.
Item 17.
Item 17, Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Commissioner Hyberger?
I have one. It's very short.
Go ahead.
Just that we had some boiler problems out with the JDC, so you'll be seeing a bill come through that in the next couple of weeks, I believe it was under $1,200. It turned out to be less than we expected in the beginning.
Oh, that's good news. Any other liaison reports this morning?
I'll be gone next week.
Thank you. Any new business? Any old business? Ken?
Just very quickly, tomorrow, and that we start with the partner counties and the JDC Advisory Board are kicking off their preliminary planning session with perspective as far as taking a look at the JDC as it relates to the JDAI initiative. So, we'll be kicking off that process, and we're making inroads too about JDAI into Lincoln County and our partner counties. We've got meetings set up here within the next couple of weeks to facilitate that grant as well.
Oh, thank you. Any questions for Ken on that? It's a great program, obviously. If not, we need to go to an executive session for pending litigation, legal briefing, personnel, and contract negotiations.
Make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive sessions for those reasons. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passed unanimously. Let's take a bye.